With that, we have some folks here today that are going to provide us a briefing on a review that has been done, a deep dive, if you will, a performance review, audit, whatever you want to call it, of our site plan process. And I'll recognize them, let them introduce themselves. You want to start us off? Okay, good.
Good morning, Mayor. Veronica Brisonio, Assistant City Manager. Just wanted to kick us off before I turn it over to our consultants and say a few words about this important report that you're going to consider today. Improving affordability and access to housing is a critical priority for the mayor and council, for our organization, and for the greater Austin community. There are numerous factors that contribute to the affordability picture, and quite frankly, many are not within the city's control. However, there is one significant factor over which we do have control, the site plan review process. Site plan review is one of the most complex development processes administered by the city of Austin, with layers of regulatory requirements that are overseen by 11 city departments, including our Development Services Department. It's also a process that can and does impact the timelines and costs of new development designed to address our housing challenges in Austin. With that as a backdrop, we asked McKinsey &amp; Company, an internationally recognized consulting firm with experience in both the public and private sector, to conduct an in-depth analysis of our review process, and they did so pro bono. This type of detailed analysis that includes an assessment of current performance, process mapping, opportunities for impact, and a high-level roadmap for implementation are all a departure from past reviews. McKinsey &amp; Company focused on understanding the current process, its impact on both our customers and staff, and how it might be improved. It was done with the partnership of more than 150 city staff, led by the Development Services Department, but including all other departments involved in the process. The review has been shared with our leadership team who are in support of the recommendations. Implementation of these recommendations will position us to make meaningful short- and long-term improvements. Further, it will help us streamline how our departments work together, will have a positive impact on the full range of the development processes, and will accelerate problem-solving and innovation. Moving forward, Development Services Director Jose Ruiz, who's here with us today, has been asked to take on a leadership role that spans the entirety of the development process. He has the full support of the City Manager's Office and the support of department leadership to get us where we need to be. Today, we have representatives from McKinsey &amp; Company to share with you an overview of their findings. Development Services Director Ruiz is also here today to answer any questions that you may have and talk about the steps that we're taking. And lastly, before I turn this over to Drew Erdman with McKinsey &amp; Company, I did want to note that based on this work, we are recommending a consulting contract that will support implementation. An RCA requesting authorization to negotiate and execute is posted as item number 23 on your agenda Thursday. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Drew. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm not Drew. I'll introduce him in a moment, but my name's Paul Coulter. I'm a senior partner at McKinsey, and I'm the managing partner for our Austin office. Been serving clients with McKinsey for 23 years. I'll introduce Drew in a moment, but I couldn't pass the opportunity to introduce our firm, our office, and myself and set a bit of the context. I'll just start with a bit of celebration. We've now been in our new Austin office for 14 months. It's grown exponentially. We've got a number of colleagues that are quite committed to Greater Austin in Texas. As context, Austin is the third McKinsey office in Texas. There's no other state in the country with three McKinsey offices. In fact, of our 170 offices globally, there's only four other countries outside the U.S. with three McKinsey offices. So, as a firm, we're very committed to the state, and as an office, we're very committed to the city. We launched our office and conducted a series of 138 interviews, with some of you included, and wrote a report that I wanted to just mention. Hopefully, everyone's had access to it, but we'd love any feedback and any thoughts on the challenges and the aspects to celebrate about our great city. And then on a personal note, I'm not a native Texan. I've lived here 16 years, 13 in Austin, three elsewhere in Texas when I was in the military. We were sharing before the session, I have three children, so I've made more Austinites. And we're personally, as an office and as a firm, very committed to stewarding the growth of this city in an equitable, inclusive, and sustainable way. And it's been an honor to collaborate with the city on this topic. So I wanted to introduce myself and set a bit of that context, but now I'll introduce Drew to share the findings of our work.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks very much, Paul. Again, it's an honor to be able to present to this work session today. My name is Drew Erdman. I'm a partner at McKinsey &amp; Company. I'm based out of our St. Louis office, and I spend 100% of my time focused on state and local government improvements. Have past public-sector experiences as well as private-sector experience, but let's dive in. It's been a particular privilege to be part of this effort. You know, there's the cliche of picture's worth 1,000 words. Well, this might be worth 2,000. It is the scene setter for what you all have experienced, your community has experienced, but also, quite frankly, the government institutions of how to adapt to this rate of change. You're familiar with the numbers, but it is worth stating again that at the start of the century, Austin was the 17th-largest city in the United States. This year, it's the 10th-largest. There's only been a handful of other cities in the United States that have experienced this kind of rapid growth and development, and it is understandable that there are a need for change to accommodate that when you think of the public sector and how it's managed. So just a few quick words. We were asked to conduct an assessment. What we did focused on the administration of the site plan development process. You see some of the highlights up on the screen. It is, you know, process mapping. It is going through laboriously, quite frankly, with the staff, over 150 from across 11 departments, mapping out what are the exact steps involved in a review process, going through the IT platforms, but also engaging, and this is significant, equally, the customers, the applicants, as well as the staff in the process. And you see that there, where over 20 different customer organizations or applicant organizations were involved in multiple workshops, as well as 178 participating in a survey. We'll show some of those results momentarily. But along the way, also surveys of city staff, working sessions with city staff, and interviews as well to co-develop these perspectives. So just a few headline messages to start with. The satisfaction with the current process is low. Over 80% of applications have three-plus cycles through the process. Over 30% have five times going through the process, so there's a lot of rework. Also, and this is based on the survey, about 80% report taking more than a year, and about 28% reported taking more than 18 months to make it through the process. So this is just a quick comparison to some other benchmarks. This is for high satisfaction. It's on a scale of 1 to 10. That would be a 9 or a 10. If you compare it to such things as this federal government, or cable television in the private sector, or even state governments, that's not just Texas, that's across the United States, the current state of Austin's site plan review is, again, lags comparable Now, the city staff have to administer an inherently complicated and evolving code, and want to stress that. This is very, very hard technical work, regardless of what jurisdiction you're in, in comparison. It is just a very difficult challenge. And then again, going back to those pictures where we started, where the evolving nature of the community, you see the scale of the regulations involved, about 1,800 different regulations. Then that gets translated into technical manuals and technical codes for the specialties to translate into action. And of course, it's an evolving code, which is understandable based upon the pace of development. Now, we'll not go through this in depth, but this lays out the basic elements of the review process. And again, it is inherently complex, but it involves four basic steps. There's the submission, where an applicant prepares a plan and then submits it through the formal process. Then there's B, the completeness check, where the city staff will go through and make sure that everything is compliant, just from a completeness standpoint, or that's the way it should be. Then there's Part C, which is the main meat of the process, the formal review, where up to 200 people or more may be involved in the process, going through a series of technical reviews. This is the meat of the process. And then backend is actually the permit issuance. Okay? And you see there that this is something that can take, not in every case, depends on the complexity, close to 1,500 steps. It is significant, hands-on, technical expertise that gives you a sense of how much time is involved in the process there, about the 20 equivalent, a 20 FTEs for work for a week. Just want to highlight also, this is not just DSD or Development Services Department. You know that, but it is worth emphasizing, 11 departments, over 200 people could touch a site plan review in process, depending on its complexity. Also, even within those departments, there's a series of very technical specialties, and some departments have multiple technical reviews by different technical experts as you go through. And this gives you a sense of the diversity, scale, and scope of that interaction. Want to note, that makes it inherently complicated to execute efficiently. And coming back to executing efficiently, one of the core findings that we have here is that across those 11 departments and all those public servants trying to do excellent work for the citizens of the Austin community, there is a lack of alignment on basically who they are serving and what is the purpose of the process. And this is just a word cloud. This is based upon a workshop with city staff. Word cloud is just highlighting when we ask them, who is your, who do you see as your primary customer? This is based on the frequency of words. The color doesn't matter, but it's the size of the word. What matters most is that there's variations across those 11 departments, and it is hard to have an efficient process with multiple handoffs if you're not aligned ultimately upon what is the purpose and who is the primary customer of the process. So a few other points we just want to highlight. We surveyed the city's staff as well, just based on not the site plan process exactly, but more generally, the skills and capabilities for operational excellence or continuous improvement, how you improve processes as you would in your work. These are some highlights of the survey. It's on a scale of 1 to 4, 4 being best, 1 being lowest. These are some select highlights. But what is significant to note is that on such things as, if you look on the left-hand side where it says principles and behaviors, the idea that leaders have visits to work areas and provide support, that scores relatively well. But if you look down below under operating procedures and technology, where it's questions such as, are staff trained and routinely apply root cause problem solving? That's just technical for, do they know how to continuously improve a process when it changes, which is inherent in the work they do? You look at something like this, that score is relatively low. And so what this just merely highlights is there are opportunities to build and improve the skills and capabilities of the cities to be able to continuously improve the efficiency of the process. Now, another point to be highlighted, we heard this multiple times in the interviews, but also just the data. We have here the attrition rate for DSD staff. This does not include internal transfers within departments, so I want to note that. It's actually a higher percentage, about 5% or 6% higher with internal department transitions. But the broader theme, which is transitions in staff have affected the performance and efficiency of the process. And you see that it takes, and this is based upon the interviews, that number 1 to 1 and 1/2 years, it could be longer depending on the technical specialty. This is hard technical work to do. It takes time to build those skills and capabilities to be fully functional as an efficient reviewer. So if you're looking at something where it takes a year, a year and a half, and some specialties maybe over that, maybe two years, and yet the average tenure is less than that, you can see that there can be a lot of discontinuity. We heard this both from staff as well as customers. Now, there's multiple IT platforms, and obviously, this ranges from the very, very tactical and everyday to the Amanda system, which is the core internal process management tool. It's Amanda's replacement was already on the agenda for taking place, but this is something that has passed its life expectancy, so to speak. And what the antiquated Amanda system, what that's necessitated is, quite frankly, a series of manual workarounds within different teams, but it also prevents for both city staff as well as customers, the transparency in the process, which impedes effective management, effective measurement, and effective performance. But that was already on the agenda for replacement. Want to emphasize that. Now, we will not go through this chart in detail, but I do want to explain it. We have a summary of it. But what matters here is what we attempted to capture, and I want to stress, this is from the quantitative surveys, as well as the interviews, as well as workshops, the idea of a customer service journey through the entire end-to-end process. And this is a graphic representation. It's a qualitative capturing it, but just let me explain how to read the chart. If you look across the top with those chevrons, that's the actual breakdown of the major parts of the site plan review process that we introduced earlier, but it's a little more fine-grained, and you see the application, completeness, formal review, and then permit issuance. And what you see here is for both the city of Austin staff, that's the lower row, and the applicant, we try and capture in a qualitative way their experience of what they're feeling going through the process. And the takeaway from this graphic is that both sides are frustrated. Both sides are frustrated in this process. Want to note also, just, we did share this graphic with both applicants, as well as city staff, in workshop settings, and they agreed with it. They thought this was a fair representation of both of their experiences. Now, just as a summary, to step back from that fine grain, what you see here is just the summary of the challenges. You see on the left-hand side, the applicants, and oftentimes, they're just mirrored on the city staff side. They're caught in this process that needs to be adapted, and it can go from unclear requirements and an opaque process, and you look at it through the applicant's lens. Sometimes, who's in charge? Who do I contact? It's unclear. That theme of loss of institutional knowledge with staff turnover. A critical pain point, this delay in comments. The comments come in batches at the end of the process, and oftentimes, applicants say, if we had only known this six months ago, we could have already addressed that. And so the question of how to provide draft comments earlier in the process to allow it to be more adaptive, quite frankly, inconsistent process and guidance. It may depend upon, again, coming back to that staff turnover, there's inconsistency in how things may be interpreted. This exact same plan may be viewed differently by someone. And also, at the end of the process, the wet signature requirements extends the permit issuance. And you can see also on the city side that there's comparable concerns or comparable frustrations. I won't go through them all, but hopefully, that conveys some of the mutuality of the challenges. Now, time is money. Time is money. And every month of delay, want to emphasize this, every month of unnecessary delay, these are complicated processes that do take time, but for every month of delay, these are some scenarios, I want to emphasize that, they're scenarios, but representative based upon kind of averages of the types of development. It gives you a sense of, you know, a redevelopment for a single-family redevelopment, around $10,000 a month of extra carrying costs. And you see that for greenfield development. Imagine redeveloping a parking lot into a property, or multifamily residential redevelopment. You can see the scale and scope, but again, time is money. Every month of delay increases the carrying costs on a development project. So looking forward, if you approach this, it's not one single process. Want to come back to that. Again, 11 departments with their own sub-processes involved, it's like it's gears of a machine. How do you make sure that those mesh together? It requires a comprehensive approach across strategy, people, processes, and structure. There's a great opportunity to move from, you know, siloed at the top, siloed 11 departments to that common approach. Who do we serve? Goes through the people model as well. The processes, how to move from highly complex, often manual, with manual workarounds, inconsistent, and this is for both city staff and for applicants, then being designed for both them, and then, of course, the structure as well to be more flexible and integrated. Outline a lot of words on this page, but basically, one takeaway from this is that you cannot do this all overnight, but the flip side is, is that there are some things you can do in the near term, medium term, and long term. There's no, there's no way to do a rapid IT transformation overnight, okay? And no one is suggesting, it takes time, for example. But hopefully, this conveys the idea of what would need to be done in different horizons, but there are a series of quick wins that have been identified, and want to stress, in the process, a series of over 30 possible initiatives developed, identified and co-developed with city staff of, the city staff also obviously knows, they have many good ideas about what we need to do to begin moving forward. And so many of those are already in motion, as the director of DSD will outline in a second. But what this hinges upon is rapid action to build momentum, but also, quite frankly, getting the cross-department governance right. This is hard stuff across 11 departments. There's no sugarcoating that. But getting on the same page, having the same performance indicators, having the same customer, and then being able to build the skills and capabilities to adapt is going to be the secret for long-term success, as opposed to something that is tactically done, and then you have to come back later. It is building, it's building the capabilities to fish rather than giving someone fish. I'm going to turn it over to the director of DSD, to Jose, to walk through the progress since we completed our assessment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you, McKinsey, for that presentation. Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Jose Roy, Director for DSD, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today and present this to you, and I really discuss the progress that we have made so far and where we're going to be in the future, which is the most important thing. I stepped into this role in February of this year, and since that time, we have been directing our attention to improving turnaround times in site plan review. It's a main priority, and really, the overall experience with the customers and development services. We set our sights, first of all, in launching our public project teams and improve affordable housing outcomes when it has to do with development, promoting a culture of collaboration between all the partner departments, and working to align our work with the mindset of one city, one team, and reconnecting with the stakeholders, which is one of the most important things that we do. So we began this work in late March, and McKinsey actually finished the work in June. And we've been making some progress, not only implementing some of the quick wins that they recommended, but also some other ones that we identify as improvements that we can actually do as a department. So from the top, Development Services, with the support of the City Mayor's Office, will be taking the lead in coordinating all the review process and everything that has to do related with improvement efforts. And we're going to be doing this in partnership with the 11 other departments that are in this process that contribute to the site plan. We have established already a cross-departmental leadership meeting, and we're going to make sure that that team ensure that change is happening throughout the development process and across the organization. Throughout the team, one of the, one of the main goals that we have is, first of all, define and create these cross-departmental KPIs, so we are measuring the right thing. Also, establishing the organization-wide standards for customer experience, so everybody has the same experience across the board, and define the IT requirements for the enterprise tools needed to support the development process. In terms of the external experience on the, on the right side there, we fully executed the colocation already, the development center, so all the partner departments have daily in-person presence in the building. We plan to extend the stakeholder advisory council that we already have to include more stakeholders that have worked with us in this initiative, and others that have represented, you know, different segments of the community. We also happy to report that in partnership with the Law Department, we are expanding our paralegal capacity. They'll be training staff on that, and we'll be looking into hiring additional paralegal in early 2024. On the, on the pre-submission review and empower case manager role, we have been successfully piloting those in the SMART and permanent housing, permanent supported housing, site plan review process, and we are working to expand that to the full spectrum of the site plan, and actively recruiting right now for temporary staff to support that model, so we can keep the staff that is doing review, doing reviews, and they don't have to, you know, change their priorities. We have not made great progress on the, on the submitted guidelines, so we're going to be working with other departments on how we can do that and have that ready for the stakeholders. And while we love the idea of the PISA tracker, or the permit tracker, it's a great idea, even, even, you know, dominos have a way to know where your PISA is at the time, so we want that transparency, that openness, that communication. We want to be, you know, we need some resources, and we're going to need the support from CTN to make that a priority. So that, that's happening. Additional wins that we have in the department, we have realigned the DSD site plan review staff and priorities to support the city goals and objectives, which are affordable housing, public projects, and priority projects. We have refined several site plan-related business processes to streamline the community experience. We launched the public project teams to the, which is dedicated to support the CIP projects, and not only streamlined the review of these projects, but also result in additional review capacity for the site plan team by removing those from, from the main team. We have developed a robust set of business process analytics to understand challenges in real time, and we are promoting a department culture with a bias towards action that prioritizes substance over process. Now, results, that's, 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 you know, if we do that, what are the results of that? So what we have seen is SMART housing reviews are nearly 100% on time. Permanent supported housing is 100% on time, so I'm happy to report that. We have recognized a 50% reduction in days needed for initial and update reviews. It went from 100 days to, you know, approximately 43. We have eliminated DSD portion of the site plan review backlog, except for one discipline, and we have granted a full one-year extension to the site plan approval. And also, we have improved, and this is one thing that I'm really big on, communication and accountability throughout the creation of that roundtable with all the departments in the city. We continue to look for improvements beyond the site plan process. I mean, the fact that we, we chose a site plan as the most complex process that we're doing in the department, with the idea that if we fix some things in there, we're going to actually have this enhancements and improvements throughout the department. So we are working to complete a comprehensive overhaul of the DSD website to improve accessibility and ease of navigation on that website. We will continue to invest in logic-based web tools to support the customers throughout the development process. We recently launched a wizard, it's called Do I Need a Permit?, which is, I've been getting a lot of great feedback on that from the community, how easy it is to actually navigate that process. We are excited about a recent pilot that we launched with a company called Archistar. Using that company, we're going to be testing the use of artificial intelligence. I'm excited about that one. That one is a great program. I can't wait to see that going. And we're going to improve the quality and the compliance of building plans of metals with that, with that company. Last, but not least, we took, we look for every opportunity to expand on our community engagement, stakeholder engagement across all the groups that we have working with DSD. We welcome all the feedback, participation across all the segment. I can tell you that every day, I have, I am blessed, and I have the opportunity to work alongside a group of dedicated public servants that are fully committed to the city and this community. And I assure you that we are all invested in working together to improve the community experience through DSD. With that said, we open for any questions.
Thank you all. Thanks, all three of you, for the report. I'll open it up for questions. Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you, Director Roy, for your comments. I was very happy to hear of all the new initiatives that have been implemented in such a short time under your leadership. You know, this information is, is important, and certainly, we've heard in our community about the issues with our permitting process, our development services process, and certainly what that entails. And for me, the way I look at this issue is understanding the unique realities that our families are facing in this city. You know, I hear from families almost every week about being priced out and having to move elsewhere because of high costs, their rents are going up, or they can't afford to buy their first home. And that is an issue. As we strive to make Austin an affordable community for everyone, and to ensure that we're keeping families in their homes, we have to ensure that this part of the process, when it comes to getting homes, affordable homes built, is quicker, and it's done efficiently, and it's done in a transparent manner. So this information really is helpful in giving us the framework to how to better understand what we need to do as, as a city and as a policymaker. A few of the questions that I had for you all. I guess, Director Roy, I'll start with you. One of the comments that were made as part of the McKinsey presentation was the lack of alignment. of alignment on who the city was serving as a, who the city was serving. And so I kind of wanted to get from your perspective, your leadership, what is the city's take on, on that service model?
Thank you, Councilmember Fuentes, for that question. I, and I, I was actually there as part of the forum that actually, when that was disclosed. And yes, we, we've seen that. I think it's a challenge. Now, who do we serve? Do we serve the community only and enforce the ordinance that we have? Do we serve the developers? So is this, is this division, you know, who do we serve? I think as a city, we need to actually have a better vision on that. In my view personally, I'm here to serve the city of Austin, so everybody's my customer. And I want to make sure that we can get that across the board with all the departments. We are here to serve everybody that comes through the department. We can do it better. The fact that we are just the, the one-stop shop, we can, we can provide a better service. I want people to come to the department and say, I got a great service in DSD, regardless that they cannot go to another city to get a permit. So we, we, we have a lot of work to do there. I think there's a, there's a lack of priorities or understanding of who is really the customer, but I think we're getting there. We have already getting the departments together. We are meeting, we are promoting that culture that everybody's our customer, and we're here to serve the community. So I think we are, we're going to be doing good progress on that one, so.
And as part of that culture building, you know, one of the other comments, observations that were shared with the report was, you know, the ability for staff to be able to pivot depending on the problem presented, you know, wanting to, to come from a place of improvement and iteration with our processes. Can you speak to that issue?
Yeah, and, and that's a challenge that we have, and I think some of the challenge comes from not having all the tools that we need, you know, in the toolbox. I mean, especially with technology, it is really cumbersome. It's all about process, process, process. I, I came on board and I, and I asked, why can we do this or that? And everybody points out to the system. We cannot do this because the Amanda system cannot do it. So I think we are, we are missing a lot based on the tools that we have. So I think that as we get better tools, as we get better technology, people will be able to prioritize and, and look at their work, look at really, what am I doing here? And, and really, you know, prioritize their work based on, on, on what they have on the table. So I, I'm really hopeful for that.
I think part of that is creating those clear processes, right? Making sure people understand, you know, have, has the department considered the ISO standard? I know that there's a certification that departments and divisions can go through to have a standardized process. Is that in the future?
We are looking at some of that. We, we have the ISO ratings already for this year. We are looking also into accreditations in the department, so we have to do some improvements to actually get better. We have meetings with the, with the people that do the ISO ratings, so we are looking forward to get some improvements so we can get a better rating coming up and also get some more accreditation in the department based on the best practices and the standards across the nation.
Okay, so we currently do have ISO, we participate in the ISO process. Okay. And then lastly, and I'll, I'll turn it over to my colleagues, is around the goals, the KPIs that were, were mentioned. Can you speak to that process, you know, in the development of the KPIs? How would you approach that? What is the process that you plan to?
So the plan on that one right now, even though we have some KPIs, I want to make sure that we're actually measuring the right thing. So we measure the things that could be measured and actually provide results. So with the creation of the inter-departmental cross-team, we are, all the departments that are dealing with the development process are going to be looking at those KPIs so we can look at, you know, timeliness, quality of the work that we do, so we can actually get the right stuff. And for that, I will tell you that we need the right technology enhancements to actually get the information and the data, to actually get the KPIs. It's been a challenge on that, and I can, there's a lot of stories on that one.
Well, and I think too, having the goals specific to the type of permit, like I know it's a different timeline associated with a permit for building a new single-family home versus a remodel, so I think having those, those nuances included.
Yes, totally agree. And that's one of the things that we're lacking right now, kind of the, the tools to divide, you know, what is it, a single-family home, is it a multifamily? We have some issues with the system right now to actually get that data correctly, to get those KPIs in place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fuentes. Other, Councilmember Ryan Alter.
Thank you very much. I'll pick up kind of right where Councilmember Fuentes left it. Well, first, I want to say, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I'm really excited about where this is going. I think the work that McKinsey has done has really laid a, a good path, and so I appreciate the manager and the mayor's work on this. I know it's an important issue. One of the, the constant themes that you hear with people, and it's not just related to the site plan process, but it extends to other things, you know, getting something from either Austin Energy, Austin Water, a TAP, a Transformer, is the ability to just have a realistic expectation, right? How long is it going to take me to get X? And they might not like the answer to that question, but knowing the answer and allowing the applicant to plan accordingly and then have that answer actually be realistic and not a, a moving target, I think is really important. And so as we think of things like the pizza tracker and other technological improvements, really being able to allow for realistic understanding of, we think your, you know, either application or this will be done at this date, and that be a, a real timeline, I, I think will go a long way for people. And as we do that, as we kind of improve our technology around this, I know we want to put the right process in place so that we're not layering good technology over bad process. I am just a little wary, though, of, I know how long it takes us to do certain technological improvements, and so I'm, I'm worried if we wait until we finally get the process right and then we start doing the technology, there won't be that, that integration that we need. And so kind of building it while we fly.
Yes.
Element, I think y'all are, are playing to it, but I just want to kind of emphasize that importance. So that's it. I, I just wanted to bring up the, that quick thing, and I really appreciate your work that you're doing.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Vela.
In, in reviewing the, the slides, and again, appreciate the presentation, and I'm very glad that we're tackling this head-on. The, the city is also a, an applicant, just like.
That is correct.
Any other, so what are our internal, you know, what do city staffers think about the site plan review process? Because they are having to go through it just like the, our private sector colleagues are.
I guess you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they actually, were actually part of the survey that you saw, they, with the smiley faces and the unhappy faces. So there is a frustration.
There were more frowns. I like your optimism and the way you pointed out the smiley faces.
You can see there's frustration on both sides. And it, it is a complex project, and I think that it goes back to the communication, the collaboration between everybody that is involved in the process and having, having a way to, when we actually find that conflict, a way to escalate that quickly so we can resolve it. Right now, it's been like kind of lost, you know, and it takes time, and, and people don't, you know, want to escalate things in there. So providing DSD as a, as a, as a leader for this process, we're going to be able to, you know, meet with other departments. Okay, we have a conflict here, we're going to move it. But yes, it's, it is, it is a frustration for both sides. I mean, it's not like, like the city's happy with the process and the customers, and I mean, it, it is a frustration on both sides, so we have recognized that.
Excuse me. Ozzy, do you want to elaborate a little bit on the improvements we've made in that regards, talking about the CIP process and the?
Yes, and that, and that's when we had the, we launched the public project teams, which actually deals with the CIP, working very close with Capital Delivery Services, with Transportation and Public Works. So we have a process for the city to actually go through that, and we actually pattern in that so we can, anything that we do there, we can use it as an example, and what can we do on the site plan as a whole and actually maybe expedite the process and, and make it better. Yes.
And on that, I, I was at the Murns Meadow flood diversion channel that they're putting in there in North Austin where the flooding took place recently. It was the first time that I had been able to interact with the Capital Delivery Services. And is, is the thinking behind the consolidation of the capital projects into Capital Delivery Services to expedite these kinds of, of projects and processes?
Yes, I've been, I've been in conversations with Director Snow on that regard. We are trying to find out what are the redundancies that we have in place right now so we can actually, you know, transfer some of those to his team so they can do all the vertical, I mean, all the horizontal projects and actually expedite the site plan permitting process in, in that regard. Yes.
I mean, I think there's a lot of sense in that where for major projects like that, they're going to require extensive permitting, they just put them all in the same department and have that kind of expertise. So I really appreciate it. And the last question, this has come up actually with regard to the Mayor Pro Tem's item on the, on the, the site plan light or removing the site plans for the four units. Apparently, there are still concerns with regard to commercial versus residential code and which applies whereby, you know, the residential code is generally speaking, a much, you know, simpler and easier code. There are more contractors available that know how to work the residential code and are familiar with the standards for the residential code, whereas the commercial code, stricter, limited number of, of contractors that are, you know, kind of familiar with the process, familiar with the code, carry the types of insurance, those kinds of things like that. And the line apparently, and please correct me if I'm wrong, though, is two units or less you use residential code, but even though we have eliminated site plan requirements for the four units, there's still this commercial building requirements that are strict, make those projects much more difficult. I, I don't know if that was quite contemplated in the, in the site plan item. Again, this is the first I've, I've really, I'm learning about this process, a very complex development process. And again, any thoughts on that or, and I understand also, I would just say like Memphis, I believe, just moved to, I think six units or less was residential code, and I want to say North Carolina as well moved to basically saying that a four-unit project doesn't need to go to the commercial level of, of, of code, with the idea being that we want to facilitate these projects and, and move them forward. Just any, any thoughts on those changes?
Yeah, yes. Even though it's not actually part of this project, I've been in conversation with HBA on that, on that issue, and I heard from some of the stakeholders about that concern. I'm a cold giga heart, so I, I'm sorry if I go too technical. But yes, I mean, there, there's a way to actually build up to four units under the IRC, under the residential code, and so we, we can, you can build those as townhomes and actually use the IRC. I don't consider the IBC to be more complex than the IRC. They have the same requirements. The only problem is that when you go to the IBC, you have more reviews in the department. So we are working through those challenges right now and talking to staff to see how we can actually make that, make that a better experience when we're dealing with the site plan light up to four units, and we are, we are making progress on that one, especially with adoption of the new codes that we're going to go next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other? Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start with a question about Slide 16. It talks about the people part of this holistic approach. And in this slide, when it says 21st century model with compelling employee value proposition and skill building, is that geared toward employee recruitment, retention, you know, promoting from within? Is that where that's coming from?
A little bit of all of the above, which is, so to step back a little bit, if you look at the research of public sector employees, why they leave, so on the retention side, actually professional development tops the list of the lack of professional development opportunities. So that is an example. That is one element of it. The flip side is also on recruitment as well as what is the value proposition for me to join an organization? And it's just one example of a potential shift, not advocacy, but just as an example, which is that many public sector organizations still operate on the kind of cradle to end of, end of a career perspective of, hey, can't we bring people in for an entire life cycle of that they remain for 30 or 40 years? When that is not necessarily realistic, obviously, in the current labor market and in the current expectations. So it's how to adapt to be more nimble and attract people for maybe periods of time in their career, you know, a starter career, mid-career, as opposed to having a, a kind of career, you know, end-to-end perspective towards your value proposition.
That makes sense to me. I know a lot of folks that are of retirement age now may have stayed in one profession their entire lives with one company, but we just don't see that these days.
You just don't see that these days.
It's something where people are going to be moving around. You know, we've had conversations previously about how to attract former employees back and trying to make that incentive more feasible for people, things like coming back in and folks would lose all of their vacation pay, and they'd come back and they'd start back at square one. And we know there's folks out there that have years of experience in working, you know, for the city and for these departments in particular. I have another question, and it is about Slide 15, where it talks about single-family redevelopment, greenfield development, and multifamily redevelopment. And it seems like there's a really high percentage of greenfield development, and that struck me, you know, are, are we incentivizing utilizing the most centrally-based land where a lot of folks already work and trying to shorten commutes? Or are we somehow incentivizing, you know, building in the greenfield, which is farther away and sometimes can create congestion and other sorts of environmental impacts? Can you talk a little bit about new development versus redevelopment and which one's more enticing?
Absolutely. What I can speak to is the, the facts of the case. I cannot speak to the incentives or the policy perspective, so maybe I'll turn over to the Director on that. But the, the numbers that you see on Slide 15, which are, you know, again, 30%, 38% of the applications in 2022 were for greenfield development. We did look for, from 2020 through 2023 as well to see if that number was consistent. It is basically consistent with the historic norm. Cannot speak to the incentives or encouragement on that number, just administratively. I don't know if, if the Director has comments on it, but just from an administrative standpoint, those were the percentages.
I'll give him just a second.
Yeah. Yeah, I will have to get back to you on that one because I don't think we have that data, but I, I mean, I don't think we're actually doing more like incentives on, on the greenfield. I mean, it's all mandated by the, by the Land Development Code. So I will have to look at, at the details on, on, on the amount of development that is going on in there and see how, how is that, that we are, we see that amount of development there, so.
Okay. And then another question on that same slide. When we talk about single-family versus multifamily, was there an assessment of things that are between duplex and let's say 20 units? Like we've talked about the site plan light process that staff is currently working on? Was, was that part of your analysis, is how hard is it to get through for missing middle styles of housing?
We did not do that analysis. So happy to provide the details on the, for example, the single-family residential. That scenario is based on a duplex. We could get into, but we didn't, we only did these three basic scenarios.
Okay.
Just as a reminder, that ordinance passed after they actually finished the work, so we were in the process of making those adjustments. So I think we're going to see more of that information once we get people using the system and see how, how easy it is to actually go through it.
I appreciate that. I know these conversations are happening concurrently, where we're trying to make it easier for people to build the more flexible styles of housing that, that fit more seamlessly into, into walkable neighborhoods. And so I'll be curious to see how that conversation plays out moving forward. I hope that this is an opportunity to get it right and to get it done very smoothly from the beginning. So I think there's some opportunity in, with these conversations.
You're right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allison Alter.
Good morning. Thank you for being here. I'm excited to see this work move forward. I do want to just offer a little bit of historical perspective because this is not the first time we've had this conversation. It's not the first time that our staff have said that we need to have better coordination and that they wanted a study and they wanted these other things, and for various reasons that hasn't happened. So for the City Manager's Office, you know, I really do hope that this time the upper management will lead in and help to make this work so that we can shorten the times and facilitate the process. But that really does require not just Mr. Roy's leadership, it's going to require the City Manager's Office leaning in. So I just want to kind of underscore that if this time is going to be different, it is not just on the Development Services Director. I want to go back to the question that Councilmember Fuentes raised about the primary customer and the different views of that. I mean, that's inherent in a government position. And, and so what I really want to understand is, you know, some of the codes are necessary for life and safety and to propagate values that we have in our, in our community. And I'm a little concerned about that presentation of, okay, who's our primary customer? And then we're saying, well, everyone's our customer. I'm not sure that, that solves the problem that's being raised, but it is true that you have multiple customers. So can you help me understand how we prioritize the life and safety issues and the quality of life issues that are part of this process at the same time that we understand that there's costs that we're imposing on the applicants with the time? Like, how do you get that right balance? And, and where does that life and safety, quality of life perspective get brought in? And how is that valued in this process that you're proposing?
Thank you for that. And I think that's, that's a challenge that we have, right? We have different departments, and everybody has a different priority. And their, their main job is to protect the environment or utilities and things like that. But they have a piece on the development process. So finding that balance, you know, finding that, how can we continue to do development in a responsible way? While we actually achieve all the outcomes. At the end of the day, it's all about outcomes. Is how we can get, we can get a better process in place that we can achieve all the goals that we have, whether it's environment, whether it's water quality, whether it's like, you know, location of utilities and so on. And resolve those conflicts along the way. I think that the, the main key here is actually not being stuck in a process, but actually look at the, at the system and look at the customers and, and provide that experience and finding that balance, which is what we're working on with the interdepartmental meeting that we have right now with the, with the other departments that we have.
Thank you. I want to suggest that perhaps you take a look at how we've implemented the wild and urban interface code, which does require that cooperation, but has allowed for some of the flexibility and allowed for some of those conversations early on while still maintaining the life safety. We are one of the only cities in the country that has done that. My understanding is the way that that's being implemented is really working collaboratively to address the real problem that the life safety issues pose while still addressing some of the cost issues and being creative, understanding that different sites are different and how you do that. And so there may be some lessons to learn even from our own processes there because I think, you know, we're still growing in that process. But I think we have done some of the things right in that regard. The other thing that I wanted to raise was the IT platforms. So we are not very good at implementing new IT platforms. I'm in my seventh year on council, and I think for six and a half years, I've been asking where our human capital management system is. And maybe on this week's agenda, I still don't know from my Q and A, the way it was posed. And that's like basic things like time sheets and, you know, like, so how is this time going to be different with respect to the IT platforms? I'm Chair of the Audit and Finance. We have a ton of audits that have told staff, we've been promised over and over and over again that we were going to be fixing Amanda. What is going to make this time different?
What is going to make a difference is that we have the full support from CTM right now. Amanda system is done. We're done with it. No more updates. So they already went through that, a task to looking at the requirements for the new system. With the work with McKinsey, we have identified all the things that need to be added to it. So now we have the full support to actually move forward with the new system. I mean, it's not like we're going to, oh, let's think about it, let's do another upgrade. We're done with Amanda. And the customers know that, we've been telling them that, and they are expecting that to happen. So we have a lot of expectation on the, on the, in the play right now. And I, I think that one of the challenges is that the experience that the customer has with the portal and getting information from the system, as well as the director for the department, it's really hard for me to, to get data on, on processes and where we are in the, in the system. So we're, we're done. I mean, so at this point, we had the support from CTM, city manager's office, and we are moving forward with an upgrade.
And how are we set in terms of funding to implement these sets of processes?
Any information? How is it going to be funded? No.
We'll, we'll get you that information. I, I, I think that, I think the funding is being allocated for that, but.
So I believe if it is not allocated already, the plan is to allocate it, but we can confirm that. But the, this is a top priority for us. It's a top priority for city management, and so it will, it will happen.
I believe it was identified as an open need for CTM. So I think it's actually, the funding is actually assigned to the replacement. So we're, we're moving forward.
Okay, I have to look back for a particular item that's for this week, assuming there's a funding source for that or it wouldn't be on the agenda. But the whole process, you know, even when they go through it, there are going to be costs. There's the Amanda cost and all of that. So if you can give us a sense of what you're projecting in terms of costs or what's already budgeted or there's a mid-year budget amendment that has to happen so that we can anticipate any changes that we may have to, to think about as we plan. I think that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Harper-Madison.
Not a question so much as a statement. I literally have a staffer right now whose computer is completely kaput. And I've had some kaputs. I just think generally speaking, I appreciate Councilmember Alters' line of questioning from a larger perspective. But for what it's worth, when our staffers and our council members' computers go kaput, it's problematic. So just wanted to add that to the conversation.
Thank you. We are making sure that all employees have the tools that they need to do the, the right work, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor Protim.
I've got one last question. I'm curious about throughout this process, if there's a focus on identifying conflicts between code and criteria manuals or other sorts of council direction? Is that part of the work?
A short answer there is yes. We did go through the kind of very intensive effort with city staff to identify areas of overlap in interpretation across multiple departments. There's 45, 47, sorry, sections that involve more than two specialties. So that means, it doesn't necessarily mean there are different interpretations. It just means that different specialties are looking at the same code. And over 90 metric themes that involve two or more specialties. There are some that involve up to nine different specialties looking at a specific issue. And it could be, you know, sidewalks or height, you know, a variety of things. That redundancy is not necessarily leading to, not necessarily leading to tension or different interpretation, to be clear. But we have gone through it and we've identified those opportunities. And quite frankly, what it then requires and has started is the ability then for the stakeholder or the internal teams to come together and actually have the discussion of, wait a second, how are you using that? How are we using it? Are we in fact in tension? So that, that was something that was identified, went through at a relatively granular level to identify those. And in some cases, the city staff has already begun to have the dialogue of, you know, deconflicting, so to speak, to make, or synchronization on how they interpret. But there is quite a, as I just identified, there are multiple opportunities where different specialties are looking at the same code or same theme, sometimes for different reasons, and that needs to be deconflicted.
Yeah, and I'm curious about that from a couple of different angles. And some of which is, do we have conflicting code where there's actually two different lines of code that don't add up to the same result? And then others that are just who's looking at the same sentence and reading into that differently? And obviously, you're going to get differences across departments because everyone's got a, you know, expertise from a different angle. But I know this DIA and previous DIA's has said, you know, we're ready to help iron out where those conflicts are. If it's really a matter of you need counsel to come in and interpret, what do we want that to look like? Or do we need to change the language of the code for specific reasons? That we're more than happy to do that. And so I just, I know we've had these conversations over the years about, are there parts of the code that just don't make sense? Are there parts that are duplicative or redundant? And, and that leads into the larger conversation of, do we need, you know, a more intensive cleanup? And do we need to make it a little more streamlined? Or is it something that we can work with the code that is existing and just try to iron out some of the problems?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protim. Your, your question reminded me of what is probably the most important question for this item is on the agenda. You know, we just heard from McKinsey regarding the report that they, that they did. And we talked about recommended strategies. Director Roy, you talked about what's already underway with the department. So what does this contract, the item up for approval on Thursday with McKinsey regarding the implementation? Like, what is the scope of work for that effort? And if someone can talk through what we can expect?
Do you want to talk about the first phase of the contract?
I think it's best for you.
Okay. Yeah, and I think that, you know, that's why we didn't wait for the quick wins. We were establishing those. Anything that we can do as a department, we're going to start that work. So the, the work with McKinsey that is coming up is going to be very in-depth, quick, looking at, you know, all the first six months of implementation so we can get the department in the, on a stage. And we can actually start the process of putting the requirements for the new IT, IT software that we need, looking at how we can, we can have that communication collaboration and implementing these tools that we need in place to actually, I don't know. I think it's a slide, you have, you have the number of the slide? Slide 17 is the one that describes, you know, the work that is going to flow. And we have adjusted the timelines accordingly. But that's, that's the importance of the work with McKinsey. They're going to, they're going to actually put all the resources they have on these. And of course, we cannot do this alone. I mean, there's a lot of resources that we need to actually meet that, that demand and the work.
Okay. Well, let me rephrase my question. Like, what, at the end of this contract with McKinsey, what is our desired outcome? What are the goals of having them onboard? What can we expect?
That's a, that's a great question. And I think that, you know, at the end, at the end of the contract, we expect to see tangible results on the, on the process. We expect to have the requirements that we need for the new system that we need in the, in the, in the department. And really establishing the guidelines and the KPIs that we need across the departments to actually make this process a, a better process. There's a lot of deliverables in there and on, on that. So for that, you have to go through the, through the whole contract and, you know.
If you look at, the, the goal of this is to implement all the findings. And 17 lays out some of the generalities, things like establishing performance management criteria, things like putting a new process in for mapping and, and what the operating procedure functioning would, would end up looking by, looking like. And I could go on and on. But then if you look at the deliverables that are in the contract, it is a, it is, okay, you have brought to us a really robust analysis of what our problems are in the site planning process. Now we're hiring you to implement what we need to do to fix all of those things. And it's going to take, as they point out in 17, you will have some things that will happen fairly quickly. Then you will have through 2024, you'll have a lot of change in 2024 because you have that full year, but that's not even finished then. It'll be sometime when you get to 25 that it will all come fully to scale at that point.
I want to add to that, that the fact that we picked up the, the major pain point, which is the site plan process, many of the improvements and recommendations that we have is across the board. So we are looking at improving everything that has to do with permitting across the, across the department and review.
And if I could add to that, the contract will enable staff, we're, we're literally building the plane while we fly it. We're making these changes as we go. The director has been great at implementing things as he's become aware of them and the quick wins that he's been able to. But staff is continuing with their daily work, implementing change and implementing more long-term change. So it's important for us to keep that efficiency and prioritization moving forward.
So the understanding is that McKinsey would be assisting city staff to implement all 30 initiatives outlined in this report?
Correct.
All right, well, thank you. I do just want, for emphasis sake, I want to also give some comments around the IT system and ensuring that the updates are made timely. I think we've all had several projects where we were promised that the updates would happen. And then that hasn't actually panned out that way. And on this chart on 17, it has IT system implementation would begin next March. And so to the extent that we can expedite that effort, just knowing the critical piece that we have and how Amanda has been outlined as a source of issue, I, I also wanted to give my attention to that as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Fuentes. Councilmember Harper-Madison.
Thank you, Mayor, for the recognition. I am, I, my question is for staff and possibly the consultants as well. I'm interested in how these proposed changes will benefit not just builders and developers of new housing or developments, but also existing small business owners. And this is why this is important to me. I'd like to provide some context. Several small businesses in my district, most recently the nationally renowned restaurant Nixta at 12th and Cedar. You're smiling like you're familiar.
I'm familiar with it.
Have found themselves in the tornado of conflicting permitting and processes. These conflicts can cause small businesses, 30 people got furloughed. These conflicts can call businesses or cause small businesses who don't even own the property to lay off their staff and lose inventory and reduce business operations to get their work done to the property and the tenants. How will these proposed improvements that are being developed benefit small businesses like Nixta Takaria?
Thank you for that question. And I am very familiar with the, with the situation there. And I could tell you that, yes, that's what happened. We had different departments in charge of different things. You're going to find these conflicts. We're not waiting for, you know, McKinsey to come in and implement improvements to actually better that experience. And I could tell you that as a fact on that one, our staff has been able to coordinate with different departments and bring them to the table to actually have that conversation with the, with the business owners. I think as we continue this process and working together as departments, we can identify those conflicts. And we can actually have a way to bring them together to have a conversation and find a resolution right away. I'm happy to inform you that we had a meeting yesterday. There was DSD staff in there, there was fire department there, Austin Energy staff in there. So everybody working together for the solution, which is, you know, in many cases, we don't see that. Improving communication transparency, that's a key. And I think that when we're looking at just, it's going to be, it's going to be an overall improvement in the department on, on all those items. But we're here for the small developer, with the big developer, for the mom and pop shop. And we, we want to provide the services, you know, the best we can. So we are working really hard to actually get that coordination between departments.
I would add to that.
I would like to complete my thought, please. I appreciate the response. But while I appreciate the response, and I really truly appreciate the level of, the level of you all appreciating that we have a gym in our city, a nationally renowned restaurant and chef who are under fire by way of our permitting process. AE, I mean, there are like four departments that are coming down on them right now. And I appreciate that you recognize that. I would like to say that while I appreciate the response, I truly hope that a part of the scope of the work that McKinsey does will include opportunities for the city to work with local business owners. It's critical to work with local business owners in a preventative, educational manner so as to prevent this kind of punitive and detrimental outcome. It has real consequences. So I must add, Nixta is a business. And I'm speaking to them specifically because I've been dealing with this specifically. Carries a great deal of publicity and notoriety. We simply do not know how many lessons that we can learn here. And it's important that local businesses have fallen prey, frankly, to our convoluted system. It's a mess. And they are right to be mad at us. So how will these changes help them? And how have existing small businesses been engaged in the remediation process?
You're talking about a specific to that case or generally?
I mean, generally speaking, I mean, beyond the pandemic, I mean, we watched so many small businesses fail, but beyond the pandemic. I just think generally speaking, we don't offer enough supports for small businesses that we rely on, require. And I would like to know, how have they been engaged in the process? Like, what are we asking them in terms of what they need?
That, that's a great question. I think we have done a great job engaging with the stakeholders, and they're actually part of the stakeholder engagement. We in the department have many, many opportunities for communication. They can come and ask questions. They can come in there with a project beforehand and have a discussion with us and look at all the requirements that we have in the codes. I want to make sure that we actually, you know, take a look at the life safety aspects of the code, which is important to have that in mind, too. But we are, we are, you know, open for the communication. And, you know, before they start the process, I mean, they can come in and they can have a communication. So we have engaged, and we have a great group of people that those. So we have engaged and we have a great group of people that those neighborhood, neighborhood engagement. And I'll make sure that, that we.
I think maybe that was the question I was asking. Like, how are we engaging with them? Like, are we offering them the opportunity to, on the front end, preventively?
And we need to maybe target more small businesses and we can actually expand that, that communication and education process on that, definitely.
I think that would be a great idea. Thank you so much.
Let me just try to elaborate. You know, councilmember, mayor council, first of all, we've engaged with stakeholders. So that's, we, we've done that. But one of the things that Jose has done under Veronica's leadership, Assistant City Manager Beniseno's leadership, is we've brought all the pieces of the development process into one building. So when we, when someone comes in to want to know, I want to go do a, a home improvement or I want to do a commercial improvement, we've got all the players who are supposed to be in that building so that they can work with those small businesses, middle-sized businesses, large businesses. The other thing that was mentioned by the consultant during the presentation, which is key, is the number of touches someone has to go through in our process is so extensive. It's easy for, for a homeowner or it's easy for any business to get frustrated with that process and try to do short circuits. And what is up happening is we end up short-circuiting a process which ends up taking longer to fix it. We're intending to try to be as customer-friendly as we can and, and also have a fidelity to the code, whether it's the building code, the electrical code, as well as the land development code. So that's really the intent here. And we're going to continue to connect with all stakeholders as we learn more from them in terms of their frustrations, terms of things we ought to be building into our process improvement so that we can address their needs as well as the community's needs.
I appreciate that. Thank you, interim city manager. I think the one thing I would add there is we have options. There are unionized block walkers who can hang door hangers and who can actually actively reach out. I think sometimes while we have these resources, which I appreciate, folks don't know that they're available to them. And that's a part of the problem.
So we'll, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allison Alter.
Thank you. I'm not sure if my question is for procurement or the city manager's office. Took a look at the RCA again for item twenty-three and do have a couple of questions. So it says it's for a term of six months. And this conversation doesn't sound like this is a six-month project. So can you share why this is a six-month term? And it's a six-month term to not exceed 2.5? Are we expecting that you're coming back in six months and asking for more money? Or is this, how, how do we, how do we think about that term?
Let me ask Veronica to answer that question since it's an item that she was the sponsor of.
The term for six months, our understanding is that it will take the six months to really get the implementation hitting the ground running. As I said, we've, we've already started. So we're trying to be, we're trying to prioritize a swift and efficient response. That was the idea behind the six-month term. And I don't believe the intention is to come back with an amendment, but I'm looking to our director to confirm that. So it is for the six-month term.
Okay, so McKinsey's engagement is the six months period not to exceed 2.5 million? And you're not anticipating coming back and asking for more after that 2.5?
I hope not. Well, we'll see. I mean, but it is right now, it's for six months not to exceed 2.5 million. Yes.
Okay. And then for better or worse, we have not had the opportunity to have that many pro bono engagements of a firm of the caliber of McKinsey and I appreciate that. But as shared audit and finance, I just want to clarify that we are able to switch this over to a contract because we are using a cooperative agreement under Omnia Partners, which I have not heard of as a cooperative agreement before. But is that the procurement process that we are using rather than competitively bidding this is because it, this particular firm is available through the cooperative agreement?
Councilmember Mayor James Scarborough, Financial Services Department, Central Procurement, you are correct. We would actually see this as a, a separate contract. The pro bono agreement was developed outside of our area when, when this requirement came to us. We looked at it first as a professional service exempt based on the experience that the contractor developed while they engaged us. But then we were alerted to the availability of cooperative contracts that could cover parts of these services. We reviewed those contracts, determined the best fit. So Omnia Partners is just a national purchasing cooperative. It's available to us under Texas state procurement statutes. You might have heard of it previously. It was known as U.S. Communities. Been around for a long, long time. We've used them on a number of occasions.
Okay. And then I would ask the city manager, so it says there's funding in the amount of 416,000 in this fiscal year's budget, but there's, and it says funding for the remaining contract term is contingent upon available funding. So presumably we have a sense of where the other 2 million is coming from. If you can provide that clarification either now or before Thursday, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. In fact, it, as you will notice from a lot of our contracts that come to council, that you'll have that phrase in there, that we've got the funding for this fiscal year and to move beyond this fiscal year will be contingent on funding, but we'll identify the funding.
That is true, but we also usually, at this point, once we pass the budget, we would know whether we have the money in the next year's budget. So I understand the RCA may have been drafted before then, but I would like the clarification before you vote. Thank you.
All right, members. First of all, I want to say thank you to McKinsey and thank you for the presentation. We also appreciate the director. Thank you for your detailed approach to this. I've been looking since I have been involved in local government for somebody that would openly admit they're a code geek and then wonder what, what the, why would you ever want to be a code geek? But I guess being the director of that department, we want us a code geek there. So thank you for being willing to admit that and thank you for what you do. We look forward to Thursday. And if there are any additional questions, of course, council will try to submit those to you in advance of Thursday. But thank you all very much for this.